Doesn't like my game.
Welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Town and Plaza Planning Board. We have eight items on the agenda. This meeting is recorded both audio and video. Michelle.
Anne Brandell, here. Tim Palmer, this is you. Terry Senical.
Here.
Debbie Blake.
Here.
James Sherman.
Here.
Melina Kammer.
Here.
Sarah Kaye.
Here. Yeah, yeah, I'm not sworn in yet.
So we have five permanent one-offs. So if there's any, if any of the people on board have any conflicts of interest with any item that comes up, please just make it known to the, the board and just go out of that particular item. Ready, Trevor?
Yeah, we'll see. We're gonna, Jess is trying to, we're having a internet connectivity issue.
So you know.
No, we can, we can roll. Always having really nice pictures is a luxury, actually.
A luxury?
Yeah, we're just used to the luxury. You guys don't know how good you have it.
I don't know what you're roughing it.
I'm on the beacon sound zone, but we don't get any picture.
We'll give it a shot.
We don't get it, we don't even give black and white photos. Glossy eight and a half by eleven. Okay.
Item one, Garvey Hyundai Parking Expansion Site Plan Twenty Twenty-Five, request to construct a ninety-two thousand square foot automobile sales vehicle storage space, providing two hundred and eighty-five additional spaces to an existing automobile sales facility located on Tom Miller Road with public water and public sewer zone, T four tax map parcel number two oh six dot dash six dash four dot four and two oh six dot six dash six dash four point seven. Owner applicant Magua LLC, engineers A E B A, and this is only a sketch plan. Is this from yours?
Yeah, I'll introduce it. We're gonna use our imaginations briefly. You can go grab the plans, the paper plans if, if folks have questions. But last, in the fall, when the project had come before you to expand a car detailing area in the back, the idea was, we were discussing how they had parking in the grass off-site, and at that time they indicated, hey, we're gonna fix it. We want to build additional parking, and they had since built the detailing building and some spillover parking on gravel area. It's still out of compliance as we've observed on the grass, but they're here now to discuss the sizable expansion, ninety-two thousand square feet of additional parking area. We did the initial sketch plan review of that and identified a few issues. Not so much a concern, just things that need to be complied with. Large parking facilities in the town require certain landscaping under section S point four, page twenty-eight in Town Center. This, the plan that was provided at sketch doesn't quite comply with that, so we've asked that they revise that. Sidewalks are required along the frontage in the T four, T five districts, as well as, you know, landscaping and site lighting along the side, along the street. Sorry for the distraction, we're just hoping a PDF will instead of a... Hey, hey. That luxury we're used to. There we are. Here we are along Tom Miller Road. Tom Miller Road's on the bottom of the screen. You can see Plaza Boulevard going to the north. Plaza Boulevard extension, see Lenny Shoe and Apparel, and there's smack dab in the middle of the screen Hyundai. The lot that we're talking about is the one behind the existing facility, right on the corner on that curve, just south of North Woods Housing Development. It's all within the T four district. See how much better this works with pictures? And, you know, their site is currently full. In this image, that was last April. You can see a couple cars up there. There's, there's more now, or there at least was in the last few weeks. And then just, you can see those Connex boxes and at the top of the screen, just below that is where the detailing building was built, about, about in that area, actually. And the site that's proposed to be developed with the new parking lot. Took some pictures of the existing surface water out there. It's kind of been pooling up against the road. You know, some of it's existing, some of it's from the road being built, but some of it is kind of coming from the site. Something that we've also put in the review that'll have to be considered when this site gets further developed, obviously with a large amount of impervious surface. And here's the proposed site plan. So this one's kind of reversed where the existing dealerships at the top of the screen, all the corporate parking is at the bottom of the screen. Just general things, this is within five hundred feet of Tom Miller Road, so it'll be Clinton County Planning Board approval. Obviously, stormwater review, we would, you know, coordinate with the applicant's engineer and work with our consultants, and would require a highway access permit from Plaza Boulevard. Other than that, hand it over to Mr. Boon for collaboration.
Okay, thank you, Trevor. Yes, the picture speaks a thousand words better than I could've said it. So essentially, this is parking storage for new vehicles at the Hyundai facility. There is an existing curb cut on Plaza Boulevard, so the alignment of the parking lot will utilize that as a second point of egress from the property. Currently, there's only the one driveway on Tom Miller Road. The, the goal here was really just to get as much vehicle storage as we possibly could on the property. As part of the conditions with the detailing shop, we attempted to alleviate some of their green space parking storage, and I believe there were about four spaces, and as I drive by, they appear to be conforming to that pretty well. As part of this project, we do show four pads for storage of vehicles on Tom Miller Road. Likewise, we have several pads along Plaza Boulevard for dedicated, you know, display of vehicles above and beyond the parking lot itself. So as part of the forthcoming detailed plan, we are working on lighting and landscaping and screening in accordance with the ordinance. I did want to request if we have the ability to get leniency from some of the T four parking lot landscaping requirements, specifically the limitation on twenty-five feet of continuous vehicles with a landscape island. You know, the, I think the ordinance for the screening kind of double dips with that, so if we start putting islands here, A, that just takes away from all the vehicle storage, but B, we've also got the landscape screening here. Likewise, internal, it requires islands on each row of vehicle parking aisles. You know, I guess I'm, I'm asking if parking lot standards apply to new vehicle storage the same way as it would when you go into a shopping plaza or a restaurant?
I wouldn't think you're trying to control traffic at that level at vehicle storage, so probably not applicable here. I'm curious if the project would be willing to compromise if they didn't have to fulfill that requirement and maybe lessen the number of spaces instead of maxing out the site. Like, how did, how did the project come up with two hundred and ninety-five additional spaces? Like, is that based on need? Like, it just seems like it's maxing out with like online purchasing of vehicles. Like, does it really seem necessary?
I mean, that's the tricky part with automobile dealerships is they, they give the dealer, you know, the manufacturer gives the dealership the objective, and then we try and fit it. Then the dealership, what they experience is ebbs and flows of delivery, which is why they overload the existing facility the way they do.
It's two and a half times the amount of parking. It seems like a big jump.
Correct. Now, one factor is they do have a long-term plan that the size of the dealership is going to grow in the future, so part of this is to account for that. A, in the number of parking spaces in relationship to the size of the dealership, but B, we'll like, we'll be losing some spaces around the dealership, so it's to offset that as well.
Are you saying you're gonna make the building bigger?
In the future, yes.
How far in the future are you thinking?
I don't have an answer for that. I was just told in the future they're looking at expanding, so that's why this is factored into this.
It just seems like you guys are eating up a lot of green space, so maybe to shrink that a little bit and move on.
I mean, I will have that discussion with, with Garvey Hyundai to see if we can, you know, we came forward with what we think could reasonably fit, and then we can have that discussion of see if there's room to scale that up.
And then what is the, the purpose of the, you said egress onto the extension? Like, is that, is that when we exit? Like, you wouldn't really want customers sort of like coming into the inventory, would you?
I don't know the answer to that either. I think it will help in terms of traffic flow in and out of the site, but to your point for someone coming, and you want to speak to a salesperson, or you want to go in for maintenance, I don't think that's the intent.
You wouldn't want people driving through though, you're like new vehicles.
Right. So I'll have to ask if they intend on controlling.
People going to scope out the vehicles. I do it all the time, drive around the parking lot, look at them. I don't really want to talk to the salesman.
Ever.
Never. Until I'm ready to find one that I want.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's a good point.
So nothing was said about sidewalks?
It's a requirement.
So, and Trevor in his letter threw out the potential of instead of... So Trevor, if I understand you correctly, the project frontage would end here as that's where the project is, per se. So Trevor threw out the idea of in lieu of that section to extend where the sidewalk is here to this driveway. So, I think really before we dive into that, I think we need to meet with Trevor and Jess and/or specifically the Highway Department, because there's drainage, there's culverts, there's other things at play.
There, there's a few challenges there.
Is that town land though?
Yeah, well, it's in the right way. It's in the right way. We have a sixty-foot wide right of way, I think. And the reason I threw it out as an alternative is obviously our goal is to have contiguous sidewalks. Having a strict, strict requirement to put on their side on their frontage, we could, we could technically require them to do five hundred and sixty feet of sidewalks on their side of the road. However, it would achieve our goals much better to do three hundred feet of sidewalk on the opposite side of the road that actually connects something to something.
And if that works out, that makes sense to you?
Other than the difficulties of construction because of the culvert and the ditch lines, but that's, that's something we have to explore further.
So you'll check that out?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can...
Speaking of drainage.
You, there must be stormwater you're gonna be doing on this, like retention or something?
Oh, yeah, correct, right. So we'll have to conform with DEC and Town standards for stormwater control.
Any issues with lighting and like the neighboring residents? Do they keep these, like lots filled bright? Because I don't know how bright they keep the inventory lots.
I mean, we, we preliminarily have some light pole fixtures shown. You can't see on the, all the blurriness, but the intent is to have it lit for security as much as anything. But, so it will be lit, it will be lit within the standards.
All downcast.
Yes, correct, within the typical standards for...
And it's vacant land to that side, and it's Lenny's, and then you got the housing development though, right there.
Right. So basically, we have Lenny's, this is the dentist's office, and then this is the Northwoods housing.
Yeah, both sides of that.
Yes.
This is what it looks like now, Jerry.
Yeah. Breakdown either side. And the only other item that was brought up is the parking on the grass. Do you address that with the pads? They know that they can't park on the grass.
And what you'd, right, and what you'd have to, and so they, they do show in this plan some proposed new parking along the front. I just want to point that out, Mike, along Plaza Boulevard. There's a couple more new ones.
Yeah, I think we have to dial these back a little bit because of interference with the stormwater, but, yeah.
That'll all be hashed out on your detail.
Correct, yeah.
Well, detail.
You have ten pads, correct?
Yeah.
Is that everything?
Yep, yeah. Mike, would those be, you said pads, so you're talking...
Well, fourteen including the Tom Miller Road ones, yeah.
So those would be new concrete pads?
Correct, yes.
Fourteen's kind of a lot. I mean, the, the ones that...
They've had more than that just in the front.
The, the four along here, I'd have to say maybe, if I, if I were rendering an opinion of what my deal more sets to like, four along this is kind of a lot. It's my opinion. You folks are...
You mean fourteen is kind of a lot, is that what you're saying?
Total, but I, I'm just saying...
So they've already got the four on Tom Miller Road?
Saying less than that.
And, but those are already approved, right? We already gave them those, right?
Yep.
So those aren't there.
Those are there.
So on the other side, where you're proposing ten, what would be the number then that would make everybody happy?
That's a long piece of way. Group consensus.
We'd have to think about what it would look like once it's tall.
Right.
We'll look crazy and have four up at the top and then only four at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
If you put, if you put forty...
It's acceptable, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I thought, I thought having four clustered here maybe a lot, that's all.
Clustered here.
Sorry, on the south, if you look on the south side, there's...
And we could ski out the guys down a bit.
Because they'll park on the grass if they don't have the pad, so.
Well, the idea's to...
So we'll have three hundred and eighty-five, but another hundred on the side.
I would suggest having noticed like cars there since that's facing the housing and just had landscaping. Like, I mean, if, you know it's a dealership, right, from three other sides, like...
That's not unreasonable.
I just think like the residents, maybe their view would be a little bit nicer. They already have the lighting now to deal with, if it wasn't like just cars right there too. Maybe some landscaping.
There's going landscaping too, that's like...
In between, little tiny rows.
Some nice trees to, to, to...
Yeah, just, you know, softer, a little softer, the commercial meeting residence.
I will say not many car dealerships have three, three front yards.
Right, that's what I mean. Like, you really need to display a whole three.
What is the name there? T four, which is Town Center District four allows all sorts of things. A wide range of commercial, including car dealerships, and two housing.
Mixed use.
Yeah, mixed use.
So I will discuss the placement of those, especially on the, the south end.
I think on the south end, they should have some trees to kind of completely block the view. Because there is residential there. I mean, how many cars do they need to see?
It's exciting to see this, this road develop though.
Any other questions or comments? No public hearing? So do you have to read, go over those stipulations, or they're in the record, right?
They're in the record.
No parking on the grass, sidewalk on the other side, stormwater pooling.
We'll get them in the meeting discussion in a minute.
Excuse me. Is there, is there a question from the public allow? There's no public hearing. The next time when it's detailed, there'll be a public hearing and you'll have an opportunity. I mean, this isn't even hashed out yet. That's what we're trying to get it, so then you'll know you'll have an informed opinion and we'll listen to anything you have to say. Thanks. You're welcome. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to accept Resolution Twenty-Five dash fifteen. Does that move?
Second. Anne Brandell, yes. Debbie Blake?
Yep.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melina Kammer?
Yes.
Terry Senical?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item two, New York Road Contractor Storage Site Plan Twenty Twenty-Five, request to utilize three existing structures for contractor storage and materials and equipment located on New York Road, public water, public sewer, zone A two, tax map parcel number two three three dot dash five dash six five, owner applicant, Miho LLC, engineer A E B A. This is a secret determination and sketch deal preliminary plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here we are out here. You can see the airport on the left of the screen, and this blue square in the middle is the property we're gonna be talking about along New York Road. They're connected down here. This, and it's all within the A two district. And here we are, northeast group up here. This project kind of came to us, the codes enforcement officer was out and about, observed that, hey, he never noticed that these were being utilized, reached out to the owner who had leasing them to contractors. Alan had said, hey, we don't have a C O O for this property, and hey, I don't think we did site plan review either. So reached out to the, the owner, Mr. Sensio, reached out to me and said, hey, what do we have to do? And I said, well, you need a site plan to do, and at least get the uses that are currently underway approved. We hear that they've been going on for quite a long time. I'd never realized they were there, but as we zoom in, you'll see used currently for storage, kind of typical contractor storage yard use. So all of those same pilots out there recently when they drove out. But, you know, in our basic review, our concept was this is existing, it's been there some time. We've reviewed other contractor storage yards. Usually what we've looked at are items like landscaping, fencing, debris. Show us what's there so we can approve it and then also set future limitations. My concern with something like this is if we don't identify all the uses and it just kind of keeps expanding, then what have you approved? So our comments were kind of related to that. If you're using some of the grass area or you intend to, it should be on the plan that way. If Alan or somebody's driving around and there's some material stored in that grass space, Alan's not saying, hey, you're out of compliance either. Show us what you intend to do and how you intend to do it now, so we capture it. We had heard some reports of some wind blown debris. There was this suggestion that some fencing could help. It wasn't really stated where or what that fencing would look like, so I didn't put specifics in this. Kind of waiting to hear back from the project. The one thing I did indicate that would be helpful is had this come to us for a site plan review to begin with, we would have required some landscaping, the minimum number of trees that we require in the buffer zone. So with that, I've recommended, you know, three trees, which isn't much along the two fronting roads along with the property. You know, in compliance with our landscaping plan, so six total landscape trees. And really, since the site is sort of existing and already there, we didn't have too many other comments. Mike, what do you think?
Yeah, so we're here to formalize this contractor storage yard use. It's been in use as this for about twenty years. It's not a high-rent property. As you can see, these are old Air Force Base garages and sheds. So that said, you know, we've tried to document the existing conditions. If you could flip, thank you. So we've tried documenting the existing conditions, the buildings, the paved areas, the concrete pad, prepared the zoning chart to show that there, even though everything's existing, there's really nothing out of compliance, per se. In regards to the outdoor use, one of the comments, I think generally speaking, if, if we offset from the back of the building ten feet and drew a rectangle from the setbacks to the ten-foot setback behind the building, that would be generally a little over an acre, and that's generally sufficient for what they use. So I would propose, you know, we add that to the plan to document the, the property use area for the contractor storage yard. There is some sort of swale back here, so there really is a physical barrier to, to keep going, and the, the contractor that rents the, the property doesn't currently go beyond that general area I described anyway. So that's what we would propose documenting on the plan for the, the outdoor storage area. I understand the tree planting is within the ordinance. I think fencing, as I mentioned, this is not a profitable rental agreement, so fencing would really be at the detriment to the property owner to, to spend the money to put fencing up, especially when, well, the property owner's across the street, but they have, they have outdoor facilities that are unfenced, and DPW is across this, across New York Road, and, you know, this, this isn't an area where really screening, I think, justifies the cost. So we would like to proceed with formalizing this as allowed use and permitted use of minimized those expenditures.
And what are they storing there?
Right now, the tenant, and I believe he's been there for quite a while, because I see his trucks there all the time. It's like a roofing company, so when I drive by, I see pallets of shingles and such.
Are they using the, the inside of the buildings also?
I believe so. Is that the case? Yes.
But they're not doing any work on site? They just go there, pick up or drop off stuff?
From what I've observed.
Yes, nobody's doing any work there.
So it's a storage area.
I, I don't really have a lot of comment. The, Mike, the only one thing of positive if, if you permit now that full acre of storage, and, you know, maybe this is nitpicky, but should uses become ugly, you know, you, you don't get a second bite at the apple, my, my only thought would be maybe considering limiting it a little more in be, in between the area of these buildings. You know, if, if you're going the full area, and I'm just looking at the full potential, if, if that was proposed from the beginning as a new contractor storage yard, then you might have thought more seriously about fencing and landscaping and other things if it were a, a new use. But I don't know if they're, are they using that full area now? Do they need that full area, like a full acre?
I mean, I think it's rare that they go off the, the existing tarmac that's there. Just it makes no sense to, for them to put things on the grass to begin with, so there's not...
And I, I'm trying to be reasonable, because this is tricky, because it's actually this whole parcel, you know what I mean? We're talking about that, this is one contiguous parcel.
Does the property owner have any intended to use for that parcel in the future?
So that, that parcel in conjunction with the one next to it is about twenty acres that we're in conversation with several other businesses to build on the entire twenty-acre parcel. So, I mean, these poor guys have been renting for month to month for twenty years. I, the, the intention for that property is to build something beautiful, not to have contractor storage because ultimate use.
Do, do you think it'd be comfortable limiting it a little bit more to, you know, th, this yard area that's kind of in between all the buildings rather than a full acre? Because you're, Mike, you were talking about ten feet behind the buildings?
Yeah, I was just trying to keep it simple. Come ten feet off of, behind this, behind this, and then connect the dots. But as Betsy indicated, they really just use this area, so if everyone wants to...
Like an hill between the buildings right there, scale it down some, you know what I mean?
Sure, sure, right.
And the trees.
So we can, we can remove this portion of it here.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just offering it, because if it was proposed as a, a whole new site, we'd probably treat it differently and be talking more about fences. So we say the full acre, and it actually, if they get really busy and they're having a ton of jobs and they decide to store tons of stuff, and, because a contractor storage yard's everything. They could put Connex boxes and roll-offs and, you know, all sorts of ugly stuff that, you know, it's part of contractor work. I'm not judging it, but, so you have to kind of think, what would that whole acre look like if it was full of stuff? That's all.
And the trees, that'll help?
Yeah, I mean, three trees are nice, and it doesn't hurt when they grow.
So he'll come up with the exact numbers, but it's like an hill from the building to the building, just that little square right there?
Yeah, in this area, to kind of allow them to use this area as the also... If you're comfortable with that, it's just a suggestion, but it might be good to land it in a little.
Is there any other questions or comments from the board? So there is a public hearing for this. Is there anybody here who wants to speak? I think there is no. Close the public hearing.
Secret?
Oh, secret, yeah, sorry.
Yep, the applicant completed the part one E A F. We reviewed it. Staff completed the part two and did not find any items of environmental significance and prepared a draft declaration or a negative declaration for your consideration.
Any questions about the secret? So looking for a motion to accept Resolution Twenty-Five dash sixteen A.
Second. Is that you, huh? Anne Brandell?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melina Kammer?
Yes.
Terry Senical?
Yes. Looking for a motion to accept Resolution Twenty-Five dash sixteen B.
Does that move?
Debbie, second up?
Yes. I did.
Sorry.
Sorry. Ann Brando?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melana Kammer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes. Thank you.
Item three, Route nine apartment site plan twenty twenty five, request to construct two. Four thousand five hundred thirty seven square feet, five unit apartment building, related site improvements located on Route nine. Public water and private sewer zone C, tax map parcel number one nine four dot dash one dash nine dot two. Owner applicant Chad and Tammy Koyer, engineer is A D B, and this is sketch plan only.
Alright, so Route nine north, um, you guys have reviewed the second set of apartments on this property back in twenty twenty, I believe. Uh, so you are probably a little familiar with it. It is zoned commercial, it's the red zone. So these are the apartments that were approved a few years ago. But we're gonna be focusing on the backside of the property over here. So, this is the rough area of Route nine where that second driveway is proposed on the sketch plan. So you guys.
Yeah. Right. So, couple of, of bigger comments for this one. Um, the proposed driveway shown for the expansion apartments in the rear of property crosses neighboring property is recommended that the planning board require the applicant to utilize space on subject property for access. It does not appear that this driveway is inconsistent use and would require an access permit from DOT as well as an access easement from the neighboring owner. Um, the proposed driveway shown is narrow at twelve feet. It is recommended that the driveway be expanded to a minimum of twenty feet in order for passenger vehicles to pass safely and provide enough width for emergency service vehicles. Um, and then there's a couple of comments from the water and wastewater department that aren't, you know, they're not project breaking, but I just wanted to read them out loud. Um, the project proposed to disconnect an existing lateral, construct a new lateral to the proposed apartments and then connect the existing home from the proposed apartments. This should comply with the town's rule of maximum two meters per property. Project will require a permit for disconnection and a new tap, which will need to be observed by town staff. And then the other one that they made a comment about was if the driveway could be designed to limit the amount of pavement that's over the main, because if they ever have to dig it up, they don't wanna dig it. They wanna dig up as little pavement as possible. So basically the angle of the driveway, limiting it to be as short as possible. Those are the two good ones from them.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so brief history, uh, there's long been, uh, apartment building on the property and then a single family home. And a few years ago, the applicant built another apartment building with five.
Two bedroom units?
Two bed, five two bedroom units. And sewage system on the hill coming down to Route nine. Uh, there's a paved driveway and gravel parking lot. The, uh, so the applicant's looking to do more apartments. Essentially, the, the, almost the same design. I think we're gonna stretch them a little bit to give an extra one to two feet width in each, in each apartment. So, the shape, as you can see, looks very similar. There's also a laundry room on each building for the tenants' use for, for laundry. So, as far as the layout goes, parking in between the buildings, sidewalk entrances, a sidewalk pad on the rear. Very, almost identical to, to the way that building functions there. And, uh, town water, but no town sewer. So, we're looking at onsite sewage disposal. Uh, as the water and sewer department noted, there's currently two services on the property. One feeds the single family home, the other feeds both apartment buildings. So what we'd be doing here is eliminating the service to the single family home and bring in a service to feed both apartment buildings and then backfeed the home. So that way, the property only is billed for two meters, uh, to comply with the water and sewer department regulation. The, uh, the driveway. So, the picture that just showed doesn't really show what it looks like out there today. There, there really had been a roughed in driveway to a point and then it all got overgrown. So, uh, the applicant, in coordination with the Sutherley of Butter, has cleaned that up and, uh, intends to have a shared driveway. It will be fully within a reciprocal easement between both properties. So, they would utilize the existing curb cut, dealing with DOT to, to make the necessary improvements. Have an easement to bring up onto the applicant's property and then the neighbor would have the rights to share it and use it. And what, I don't think there's anything on the property in this vicinity, but he would have, they would have the availability to use it as a shared driveway. So that's the intent and, and concept of the driveway itself. As far as the width, we really kept the same twelve foot width of the existing driveway. Understanding this is a longer run and we can look to widen it, uh, to, to allow for passing vehicles.
Is there a reason that's not connecting to the existing driveway? Just like, what is the reason for a separate entrance exit?
Just to even out the flow. I mean, we've got, we've got tw- uh, eleven units here on a twelve foot wide driveway. So it made sense to, to keep them separate and, uh, and.
It's the building behind, so you see.
This one?
Yeah.
This is, um, it's a division of charter?
Uh, spectrum.
Spectrum, yeah. So it's a telecommunications business.
Just question why, is there any consideration to run the driveway from there?
So originally, when, when the applicant built these apartments, historically, this dri- this parking area for these apartments had a driveway that came down. As part of that project, the applicant explored getting an easement from, it's not charter, but we'll call it charter. From them to continue the operation of that. And while, while the applicant was given a verbal, we have no problems with you being a driveway. They said, based on corporate stuff, we can't get an easement for you. So, it was actually kinda dug up right in here to prevent occupants from, from going that way. So going to them for another driveway would, would be fruitless.
So the current conversation with the Sutherley neighborhood, they're fine, giving the easement. So we'll just see a draft of that with a detailed plan. We don't, we don't have any, you know, if they get a reciprocal easement, we don't have any prohibition of that.
The DOT, the easement is twenty feet wide.
Yeah. Uh, or however many. I don't know if you're offering a compromise, sixteen, eighteen, twenty. I mean, uh, twenty is nice for, you know, the ability to pass and if there's, you know, an emergency event, but we don't, we don't have a standard for driveways.
One of the reasons why we picked that, cause there's an existing cut there. And on that portion of Route nine, it's like ten feet tall of ledge. So it's already existing, it's cut out. I mean, it can be cleaned up more.
Right.
But to get, uh, you know, I'm sure we go a little wider, but to go, you know, really big, it's a huge undertaking.
Did the other, the existing buildings have laundry services attached to them?
Yeah, there's one right here.
So like they wouldn't be like traveling over.
Correct, right.
What provisions are there for storage in this building?
Um, I mean, you have closets inside, but there's no, there's no additional like.
Shit.
Outdoor sheds, right.
So bicycles sit outside the door or what?
Yeah, I haven't had any, um, any that type, type of issue with outdoor storage stuff.
Can I set up a bike rack?
Some folks don't, it's like walking their bikes, right?
That is a walking driveway, Mike.
Well, it sort of follows the terrain. As, as Chad said, it kind of comes up abruptly with ledge and it's, it's sort of carved in right here.
Just so much less pavement to just let it connect it.
So it kind of already sets some of the geometry off of Route nine. I mean, the, the home has, this is a garage, if you can't.
Yeah, as I say, you'd have to tear down that garage to actually do that, because we may, there's not room to go between the buildings. And then you wouldn't want the, the whole occupants to be walking through a driveway and get to their garage and through traffic.
So as long as they jump through the appropriate hoops, that's completely perfectly okay, okay?
Should be fine.
Yeah, the reciprocal easement is what's written into our ordinance, that if you have access across to the properties, you have to have a reciprocal easement. So, we, we allow for it in the ordinance.
Any other questions or comments?
I will say about the ledge there, if you do drive there and you look, I'm lucky to see all the shale. I mean, it's, it is bare ledge right there.
The ground is up right there.
I kinda forgot about that.
There is no public hearing for this item sketch. So if nobody has anything else, looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty five seventeen with the, uh, aforementioned things in the driveway, so those things are free. Anyone, twenty five seventeen, some move?
Ann Brando?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melana Kammer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes. Thank you.
Item four. Solar power network subdivision twenty twenty two. Request for a two lot subdivision of a twenty three point three zero acre lot resulting in lot one being a four point six three three acre solar farm, lot two being eighteen point six seven acre solar farm. Subject to the town of Plattsburgh Solar Law. Located on the military turnpike with public water and private sewer zone R two, tax map parcel number two oh six. Dot dash one dash one dot one seven, owner applicant Leona Radadat, engineer is RMS. This is a seeker reformation and detailed preliminary and reapproval. Reapproved, yeah. Use this one?
Um, so you guys reapproved us back in the fall, but subdivisions have a much shorter expiration timeline in site plan. So that's why you're saying again, absolutely nothing's changed. This is a rented out property. This is lost, so it's mentioned. And this is the turnpike, um, subdivision's identical, just still walking forward the project. I don't have any other comments.
No further details to tell, Aaron?
Let me see, yeah, we were before you, several, six months ago, uh, where we got the extension of the site plan. But the site plan extension was for a year, but the subdivision was only for six months. So the subdivision had six months prior to the site plan rule. Uh, we actually have a financial closing scheduled for this Friday, as part of the due diligence by the attorney who was like, hey, we got site plan extension, but you forgot to get the subdivision extended to match. So we're here tonight asking for the two of them to a line.
And if you're wondering why that's like that, it, there's, well, county article ten health law related to subdivisions, it's set through that, so.
It's not a town law.
Interesting.
Yeah, so we can extend site plans, you know, we have a little more authority to do that, but we don't have the authority to just blanket approve subdivisions for as long as you want. Otherwise, we might consider it, but.
We would definitely consider it.
So it's the same, nothing's moved.
Any other questions from the board? There is a public hearing for this. I'll open the public, yeah, the public hearing now, does anybody want to say anything? I think that is, no. The, uh, this whole seeker.
Because there are no changes, we're recommending a reaffirmation of seeker.
So looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty five dash eighteen. Some move?
Ann Brando?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melana Kammer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes.
Item five, which is a combination of three items. Alright. Drew Plattsburgh Community Solar Subdivision twenty twenty four, request for a split merge of three parcels into three newly configured parcels resulting in a lot, in lot one being twelve point four acres of remaining lands. Lot two being twenty two point six acres of solar farm, lot three being twenty seven point eight acres of solar farm. Subject to the town of Plattsburgh Solar Local Law. Located on Route nine with public water, private sewer zone C. Tax map parcel number one eight one dot dash three dash one zero, one eight one dot dash three dash one zero point four. And one eight one dot dash three dash one zero point two. Owner is Drew, Drew Poultry Farm Inc. Applicant is Alternative Energy Development Group LLC and an engineer is RMS. This is a secret determination. Actuated on to Drew's Plattsburgh Community six point five megawatt solar. You're telling me to read all three at once, right?
For the record, I'm sorry.
No, no, I didn't know if you wanted to inject in between each one, just.
Yes, yeah, please, we'll introduce them all.
No, I thought you, like, did one of those. Drew's Plattsburgh Community six point five megawatt solar site plan and special use permit twenty twenty four, request to construct a twenty two point six acre, six point five megawatt DC solar farm with related site improvement, subject to the town of Plattsburgh. Solar local law located on Route nine with public water, private sewer zone C, tax map parcel. Again, one eight one point dash three dash one zero, one eight one point dash three dash one zero point four and one eight one dot dash three dash one zero point two. Owner is Drew's Poultry Farm Inc. Applicant is Alternative Energy Development Corporation LLC and the engineer is RMS. Still a secret determination. And third one is Drew's Plattsburgh Community five point four, solar site plan and special use permit twenty twenty four. Request to construct a twenty seven point eight, five point four megawatt DC solar farm with related site improvement subject to the town of Plattsburgh Solar Local Law located on Route nine with public water, private sewer zone C. Tax map parcel number one eight one dot dash three dash one zero, one eight one dot dash three dash one zero point four and one eight one dot dash three dash one zero point two. Owner, Drew's Poultry Farm Inc. Applicant, Alternative Energy Development Corp, Group LLC and the engineer is RMS. Secret determination.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for accurately and diligently entering those projects into the record.
I think I could have read the lot number just one time. We'll see next time.
I could have proposed, I was wondering if you were gonna propose it, but you just kept.
No, no.
Okay, quick, quick recap of what we're doing here. The, the applicant had previously submitted, uh, met with us and submitted an application to the planning board for a, um, development of a solar project, two solar projects actually, on multiple parcels on Route nine north. On property that's zoned commercial. Within our solar local law, the, uh, establishment of these solar energy projects on commercial properties is not allowed use. However, they decided to submit for a sketch after having conversations with us and the town uh, in an effort that they may, uh, try to obtain a waiver from the town board from that, uh, part of the local law. To weigh up a little background, our local law was written specifically prohibiting it on commercial lands primarily to protect property values in areas of public water, public sewer. This site is a little unique in that it's, but it's the highway, it's been for sale for a long time. Shallow depth to bedrock, it's not prime ag soils. Uh, and it slopes, uh, uh, very much that the, the back section is on an up slope and then the, you know, really, there's more developable land down along the road. In an initial conversation with the town board, they entertained a willingness to consider a waiver, although they didn't issue one. They said they wanted the plant, input from the planning board. So the applicant did that, submitted a sketch plan, uh, to you folks. We reviewed it, um, and then they came back with, uh, some of those changes. Now, uh, in consultation with attorneys, we, uh, we had a question whether the town board could act on a waiver even, uh, because there hadn't been a seeker done yet. And who was the most appropriate party to do the environmental review? Uh, our advice was that, uh, it was, the advice given to us was that it was most appropriate for the planning board to continue to be lead agent for that review and to complete that environmental review before the town board even considered, uh, whether or not to issue a waiver. Should they issue a waiver, then they can come back to you with the detailed plan. So the process we're in right now is considering the, the seeker review and the environmental impact. So the process we're in right now is considering the, the seeker review and the environmental impact. So here we are, back on Route nine, these are the three parcels, uh, owned by Drew Poultry Inc. And there was multiple, uh, you know, versions of the plan. Uh, this was, um, this is a version that could potentially solve multiple issues, give all the properties frontage. Um, it's gonna be hard to see when I bring up this plan, so I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll attempt to talk about it here, Eric, as well. But one of the most recent plans still proposed, you know, three parcels, a, a large frontage parcel, or not a large frontage parcel, three parcels that come out to Route nine. Our concern and in conversations with the town board was that one of our goals was to preserve this commercial frontage along Route nine, and basically, a goal would be to, to have the property separated so that it could be, uh, subdivided and sold in the future for commercial purposes. The subdivision plan that they came back with recently didn't do that, but I met, uh, had a Zoom meeting with the applicant and.
Zoom in.
Zoom in? Well, you're gonna show that they have frontage here.
I was, I was step over you a little bit here. So, uh, obviously, if you look at the plan that we submitted, um, if you can switch it up, bless you. Can you go to my plan?
You said zoom in.
Well, I said my plan. You said I didn't do something. Um, what we've done with the proposed subdivision is obviously, you saw there were three lots, so combining them such that we end up with two lots developable for solar. And what we have done is when we look later onto the development plan, you'll see all the solar development is located on the west half of the property. Such that what we've identified here is that a line, you'll see here, there's a setback line, it's actually way back here. What we did is we maintained the width of the neighboring hardware store that's to our south, so the little over three hundred feet, what we've identified in the subdivision that this is a future area to be subdivided off for future development. So what we've done is that we've placed the screening on the backside of that, and we've placed the solar raise seventy-five feet from that proposed future lot line. Such that although these lots have lots of frontage on Route nine, the idea is that this whole, the whole site development is that this could be subdivided out at a later date if a commercial user came along. Uh, another point that is, we always try to look at a single driver, access for the utility entrance into the facility for, uh, the solar rays and bringing the power back out to Route nine. We are currently working with NICEG because they have a substation located right here. So we're in the process, and hopefully, that we can actually divert all that directly to the substation and get rid of the access onto Route nine. But if we did have to go Route nine, and I apologize for not bringing it, uh, if you look at what we did for the facility on Route twenty-two right behind Bucks, the idea of the four poles in a row and the transformers, the disconnects, you know, the ugliness of that. If you look at what we did behind Bucks, you actually will never even notice that there are four poles. Uh, what we did there, if we had to went to street, we put the next pole three hundred feet back on the backside of properties, and then spaced out the other poles going down the hill into Buck, so the idea that you have to have all four of those poles right tight to the road, yeah, was not necessarily true. You can modify it to space them out to get rid of, you know, the eyesore that was brought up at the sketch review. So we have, I don't know if you have my development plan, uh, also. So as you can see, you know, here we have the screening, again, located far enough back, so if you maintain the width of the lot to our south all the way along Route nine, everything located to the west, leaving all of this open for future development, because that was certain the board had, the town brought up that we wanted to incorporate. Yeah, the question becomes is whether we have to create those parcels now without development. We're clearly identifying that that is a, you know, future lot line, but you know, say we get someone that wants this much of, you know, I guess we've left it undeveloped with the commercial activity that we're proposing, such that it could be developed for commercial, the future use, to create a separate parcel, just to have a separate tax parcel. You know, without a tenant coming to use at this point, I don't see a need for that additional subdivision. You know, we have really accounted for that future growth, so that's really what the intent of the request was and what we showed on the plan.
This site plan like limits expansion, right, like they couldn't just expand into that? Right, okay.
Yeah, and so part of the waiver, so acting as emissary of the town board, I met with, uh, the applicant and, and, and that, and kind of delivered the message of the, the, the town board may not be interested in issuing the waiver unless that subdivision happens, because they, they feel that if it's left contiguous to the solar property, uh, there's not a lot of incentive to even market it or do it, it can just sit there, whereas if it was separated and clearly delineated that the waiver is only for these tax parcels specifically, because it's hard to issue the waiver specific to parcel, you know, it's a lot easier to, if it's parcel IDs for a subdivided parcel rather than, I don't wanna say an ambiguous area, but it's.
It is something that, yeah, we, I guess for tonight's discussion, you know, kind of a little point, uh, you know, so, you know, from a seeker standpoint, the projects are changing. We're gonna, we can figure the lots, we're gonna put solar on it, we'll work out those details, uh, with the town board. You know, it's just, we don't, first, I don't see a need to create a tax parcel that, that could change depending on, because the idea is, once the final interconnection point with NICEG is determined, that may be ideal to be a dividing line between lots, if we go across, we take one lot, yeah, I mean, so it's just, you know, in my mind, it's too big, unknown, so to create subdivision, pay taxes on separate buildable lots, so then come back and amend it when there is a plan. You know, the town board can approve a plan, and obviously, no future growth of that plan can occur, you know, without either going back to them or back to you, so.
So if he leaves a plan like this, and he goes to the town board, the town board doesn't give him the waiver, does he have to come back to us?
No.
Without, without the waiver, he can't do it.
Project would be dead.
He'd have to come back to us to continue on.
No.
No.
It's like a variance, yeah.
So it'd be dead. Well, they.
It's like a variance, if we don't get it, the project.
Well, no, but then you could agree to separate.
Well, if that was a request of theirs.
So if they request it.
Yeah.
You're gonna do it.
If it's a condition, yes, if it's a request, we can continue.
And then my question is, would they have to come back?
When you were explaining the project and you were saying.
They have to come back no matter what.
If.
Right, because this is.
If.
Right.
Somebody wants to, and immediately.
So it doesn't do any.
How long is this future date supposed to go? Is it fifty years? Is it ten years? If the, if the owner gets tired and says, well, nobody's wanted to develop it in ten years, we want to develop it now. So to break that out, they'd either have to say, we're bringing this out in perpetuity to never be developed, or make another parcel, from my point of view.
Kind of lost feeling a little bit there, but yes, you'd have to create a separate parcel, but.
Yeah, I see what I'm saying, though.
Well, no, if to create a parcel, I mean, to look at this size and what, uh, you know, ready to repair these hardware occupants. So if you think of something similar, okay, there's a lot for them. So we're gonna create one large lot.
It can always be divided, we subdivide all the time.
You're right, exactly. We can subdivide this at a later time.
Or not.
That's not.
Or not.
Or not.
Okay, it, it's good, it's discussing, we'll have a town board.
And like I said, they say, if, if, if the owner says, we'll give it ten years.
We don't have that option.
Oh, no, no. You don't.
Well, kind of the point being is that.
Well, it's the condition of your approval for site plan and the town board's condition of granting the waiver.
We, we don't have to, since we're here only looking at seeker tonight, and th- these are just informative details. And that this, this component, I don't think at all affects the environmental review, you know, it's just imaginary lines on a, on a map. But the, the, you know, they are asking for a favor from the town board, the town board has at least expressed to me interest in having that. So it'll be the town board's purview to either have that be a condition or allow it to be done later. Uh, if they require it, they require it, they'll end up subdividing it now. If the town board, you know, decides, okay, wait till later, then that'll be what's.
We can send it along and see what the town board says.
Absolutely.
And then we can cross that bridge when they come back.
Absolutely. So if they, if the town board issues as a, a condition of their waiver that it must be subdivided, then we'll get a subdivision plan and, you know, review it accordingly. Any else there?
Any other questions or comments from the board? So there was, did you have to back over to seeker in any way, or just?
Definitely, yeah. So this was, uh, considered a seeker, uh, type one action, and, uh, under the local law. A few things did come out in the review, uh, specifically that I want to mention, because we did complete, uh, applicant completed a part one, we completed a part two, and a part three. Um, in the part two, a few items were identified that were, um, significant and should be addressed. So I, I want to read a few things into the record relative to the, the part two and three. At the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the planning board, the board resolved to consider the project a type one action. The three combined actions, one subdivision and two special permits, have been reviewed together to avoid segmentation and to allow for the consideration of cumulative impacts. No other involved agencies were identified. Uh, the applicant has provided a seeker part one long form EAF for the planning board consideration. Uh, the seeker review has been conducted, considering, but not limited to, the following materials. The town solar local law, the project site plan, special permit application, project narrative, project site plan and subdivision maps, the full EAF part one, the full EAF section F supplementary information and agency desktop review, that's what was on the table in the boardroom. Clinton County Planning Board Decision on Referral seventeen twenty-five dated April second, twenty twenty-five. The New York State DEC Pied Bill Greavy Description, the New York State DEC Silver Maple Ash Swamp Description, and the full EAF part two and three. So typically, any items that were, uh, identified as significant in the part two, you need to provide a narrative response in the part three. So for the record, I need to provide that for you, for your consideration. So I will. Uh, this was the recommended response in the part three on your behalf. You can tell me if you disagree with it or if you agree with it. Uh, in consideration of the following, the planning board finds that this project will result in little or no negative environmental impact. In consideration of the town solar local law, the project site plan application, project narrative, project site plan application of maps, the EAF part one and two, the supplementary information, the DEC Pied Bill Greavy Description, the New York State DEC Silver Maple Ash Swamp Description, and the full EAF part three. And, uh, I needed to respond to the following, uh, five sections. Although the New York State DEC Resource Mapper identifies the presence of the Pied Bill Greavy nearby, the Greavy is a water bird that resides in open water and requires reed-filled marshlands. The project site is at a significant elevation above any habitat of this kind and consists of fallow cornfield. The nearby Woodruff Pond at lake level is the primary location for the Pied Bill Greavy habitat. And although the New York State DEC Resource Mapper identifies the presence of Silver Maple Ash Swamp Natural Community nearby, this habitat is located at Woodruff Pond on the opposite side of Route nine, and the project site is at a significant elevation above this habitat or any like, any like it and consists of fallow cornfield. The nearby Woodruff Pond at lake level is the primary location for the Silver Maple Ash Swamp. Question eight, impact on ag resources. The project will be located on lands that are currently used for agriculture, however, the land is zoned for commercial use, which allows for a development intensity, uh, commercial, multifamily, residential, restaurant, retail, et cetera, uh, far beyond the installation of solar panels. Uh, the land is not located in the Clinton County Agricultural District. Question nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The project will be partially visible from New York State Route nine and from New York State I eighty-seven, but will be required to install robust landscaping and maintain existing trees where feasible. And the project is not located in a protected, protected view shed area nor obstructing protected or locally known vistas or scenic lookouts. And question seventeen, consistency with community plans, since this requires a waiver. Uh, the project is proposed in a parcel where, uh, the use is prohibited by the solar local law. The town board is considering waiver of this law for this application, and the planning board is acting as lead agency for, for the environmental review. The proposed subdivision is for the purposes of preserving the commercial road frontage and use of public water in accordance with the town land use objectives. Um, and so for all of those considerations, we've recommended a, uh, negative declaration of environmental significance.
Anybody on board have any thoughts on that?
And if anyone wants the description of Pied Bill Greavy Habitat or Silver Maple Ash Habitat right here.
Any other questions from the board? Anything about the seeker? With no public hearing, so I'm looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty-five nineteen.
Some more?
Second, anyone?
Second.
Ian Brando?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Elena Camer?
Yes.
Terry Sennical?
Yes.
Item six. Hampton Inn and Suite Site Plan twenty-two twenty-five, request to construct seven double parking spaces to accommodate vehicles and trailers, including additional side block for access, a new concrete pad for a gazebo, and new storage and dumpster enclosure. Located on Route three with public water and public sewer zone T four, tax map parcel number two oh six dot four dash one dash one six. Owner applicant Diane Akey, engineer Ivan Jelzer.
Strahal.
Okay. Sketch plan review.
Ivan, thank you.
All right, so here's Route three, this is the Hampton, right here. The proposed expansion for parking is in this area. This is the site plan, this is the back of the building, these are those long parking spots right here on an angle. The dumpster enclosure is here. This is a pretty basic site plan, so I don't have a lot of comments, all of them are standard comments. The only comment we had was asking if there'd be any utility hookups, because obviously, these parking spots could be for short haul trucks, campers, bass tournament folks, and sometimes they are looking for extensions and utilities. Um, not that it really affects the site plan at all, but it's nice to know if that's what they're gonna be using, because they might affect how they proceed. So that's all I have, if you would like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Ivan Strahal, I represent, uh, the applicant Hampton Inn. My, uh, client is seeking basically two improvements on the property. One is to
Show up on the screen.
construct a, uh.
Yeah, unfortunately, the laser pointers usually don't show up on the screen, it absorbs the light.
This is possible, I remember.
Yeah, it absorbs the light.
It doesn't work on TVs.
Yeah, sorry.
They're proposing to, as, uh, uh, planner indicated, Jessica, uh, there is a carbon area right in here. So they're planning to, uh, it's, they're planning to, uh, construct, uh, yeah, uh, double D parking spaces basically to accommodate guests, uh, various, uh, pickup trucks and fishing boat, because they have a lot of, uh, guests during the, uh, fishing tournaments.
It's a mess.
So that's the main objective of that. Then, uh, in connection with that, we'll be constructing the, uh, we will improve the pedestrian circulation and also provide a direct access to the hotel. That will be a small paved area for a, uh, gazebo, not like something you construct on a foundation, but it's a gazebo you bring out here like you're already made. So the fishermen can enjoy the time in the gazebo. Talking about their experiences underwater and fishing. So that's, in nutshell, that's that part of that, uh, project. The second part is, is to improve their operation, uh, of the hotel in regard, uh, additional storage facility and a, uh, enclosed dumpster enclosure for two dumpsters. You know, they, they had a dumpster, previously dumpster location on a joining property which was sold. So that, so they, at this time, they have like a temporary location for the dumpster on the side, uh, sitting on the wall. So that dumpster is proposed in this area. It's a, but it's a masonry structure, uh, we provided the architecture, they, they tell you, I have it in your handout. So that will be, the, the storage will be enclosed, and the dumpster will be enclosed, there will be a two doors accessing for each dumpster. The access is, uh, very easy, basically, that this is the access to the dumpster, bankout, and, and. So that's, uh, you know, that's the extent of the, of the project, uh, that I'm thinking.
May I play a green space still, right?
Yeah, so.
Any questions or comments from the board? This is yet bigger. No? There's no public hearing? So I'm looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty-five dash twenty. Some move?
Second.
Second. Anne Brandell?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melinda Tamer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item seven. Rain, Melain, subdivision twenty twenty five, request for a lot line adjustment, no new buildable lots will be created. Area variance required, located on firehouse lane with public water, private sewer zone R four. Tax map parcel number one nine four dot one five dash one dash one five, and one nine four dot one five dash one dash one six, owner applicant Susan.
Melain?
Remaley.
Melain?
Remaley?
Mm-hmm.
Engineers AES, Northeast, to seek determination and detailed preliminary plan review.
Alright, so, you folks saw this project a couple months ago, this is our house name. If you remember, um, property used to be one property, there were two camps on it. Property boundaries have changed a couple times over time, and there's a septic system in question in this area, and that is why they would like to go from this configuration to this configuration. Um, they did get the area variances required for this project to go forward, so we don't have any comments, comments at this time, other than they received the variance.
That's the original parcel, correct?
This is, uh, blue is the larger camp.
Yeah, that's the original Remaley parcel, and they allowed the other people to use part of that, is that correct?
Right. That's the extension.
And now they're saying we can't use that anymore.
So just, I believe it all was one, and then they subdivided it this way, and then, as ownership has changed over time, they wanna go back to this. To keep the septic with the associated house.
Simple one for you tonight, ladies and gentlemen. So yeah, it's, um, Jessica said, we've got the, uh, the zone variances that were required at, uh, last week's zoning.
And is the little yellow lot gonna go for sale, or do you know?
Yes, that will be put up for sale after this.
Interesting.
No. I thought.
Never know. Any other, no, definitely not. Any, uh, more comments or questions from the board? There is public hearing for this, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody's here to speak?
Do they have a variance number?
Uh, it was, we requested it as part of the plan for signature, but I don't have it on.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the file.
So, moving along, did we have to do the, the seeker was all set, right, you didn't have to go over that?
No, the, the project concluded part one, we completed part two, and so we did not identify any significant environmental impacts.
Okay, looking for a motion for twenty five dash two one A.
Uh-huh.
Second.
Anne Brandell?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melinda Tamer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes. Looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty five dash two one B.
Oh. Second.
Anne Brandell?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melinda Tamer?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes.
Also, Michelle, correct me, the variance numbers in the resolution, just not where we're at.
Hmm.
It is twenty three four one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Good night.
Thanks, Scott.
Item eight. UMS Properties Distribution Center Site Plan twenty twenty four, request to construct a seven hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot warehouse and distribution facility with an office area and related site improvements. Area variance required, located on Salmon River Road and Route twenty-two with public water, private sewer, zoned I. What's the star for?
That's the specific district, it's I asterisk.
Cuz it has a buffer.
I asterisk.
When we rezoned it last year, it's, it's not the full industrial district, it has exemptions.
It doesn't.
Okay, I asterisk. Tax map parcel two four five dot dash four dash one six point two, two two point one one, four zero point one, and four one. Owners Iana, I own a brand revocable living trust, Thomas Leclerc Living Trust, and Robert and Rita Brunel. Applicant is UMS Properties LLC, engineers RMS, EIS report to receive and place on file for review, so we're just receiving your report.
Yeah, this is a very unexciting procedure, but it's an important one. Um, after the planning board declared the project to be, uh, positive environmental impact, that required the, um, uh, applicant to prepare a draft environmental impact statement after conducting scoping. Scoping was completed, uh, and now a draft has been presented for your review. Um, once this is received, the board will have forty-five days to determine whether it's complete and it's available to, and to be made for public consumption. Um, it was recommended that I read this resolution into the record, because it establishes the exact dates once certain things happen, unless the chairman would like to.
Negative.
So I will do that, um, and then we can have a brief.
Read the draft into the record.
Uh, it's a draft resolution for your consideration. For the record, whereas, UMS Property LLC, the applicant has submitted an application to the town of Plattsburgh, town, planning board, planning board, seeking approval for the following. UMS Properties Distribution Center Site Plan twenty twenty four, request to construct an approximately seven hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and fifty square foot warehouse and distribution facility with an office area and related site improvements. Area variances are required, located on Salmon River Road and Route twenty-two, public water, private sewer, zoned I asterisk. Tax map parcels two forty-five dash four dash sixteen point two, twenty-two point one one, forty point one, and forty-one. Owners I own a brand revocable living trust, Thomas Leclerc Living Trust, and Robert and Rita Brunel. Applicant, UMS Properties LLC, engineer RMS, petitioner. And, whereas, the petition is subject to environmental impact assessment pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, or Article eight of environmental conservation law and its implementing regulations at six NY-CRR, part six seventeen, collectively referred to as seeker. And whereas, the applicant submitted a full environmental assessment form on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, whereas the planning board determined that the project was a type one action pursuant to six NY-CRR six seventeen point four, the seeker regulations. And whereas, on June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, the planning board declared its intent to serve as lead agency in order to complete coordinated review of the petition pursuant to seeker, and circulated its notice of intent to involve agencies, and having received no objections to the notice of intent, declared itself lead agency on August sixth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty four. Whereas, on August sixth, twenty twenty four, the planning board issued a positive declaration requiring the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement, the DEIS, by the applicant. And whereas, on August sixth, the planning board also accepted the draft scoping document for the preparation of the DEIS and directed the draft scoping document be sent to all applicable involved and interested agencies. And whereas, on August sixth, the planning board also directed that the planning board shall cause a notice of a public hearing to be posted and advertised for September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, for the purposes of receiving public comment on the draft scoping document and discussing any written comments received during the public comment period. Whereas, on August ninth, twenty twenty four, the planning board commenced a thirty day minimum public comment period. And whereas, the draft scope was then provided to all involved agencies, made available to the public and interested agencies. Whereas, a public hearing was held on the draft scoping document on September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. And whereas, on September seventeen, twenty twenty four, the final scoping document was accepted by the planning board for the preparation of the DEIS, and directed that copies of the document be provided to all involved and interested agencies, as well as individuals requesting a copy. And whereas, the applicant pursuant to six NY-CRR six seventeen point nine, the regulations implementing seeker, has prepared a draft environmental impact statement. And whereas, the planning board on April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, has received a copy of the draft environmental impact statement, electronically, and soon to come in print, very large print. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board has received and shall place on file the draft environmental impact statement prepared by the applicant, and be it further resolved that the planning board has requested that the planning department staff and their consultants review the DEIS prepared by the applicant, and to make a recommendation to the planning board on the sufficiency and completeness of the document for the purposes of commencing public review.
Thank you, Trevor, I appreciate you. Glad you're in there. So, does the board have any questions for, uh, Aaron or Trevor? No public hearing, so just looking for a motion to accept resolution twenty five dash two two.
Second.
Anne Brandell?
Yes.
Terry Centicle?
Yes.
Debbie Blake?
Yes.
James Sherman?
Yes.
Melinda Tamer?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask a question, did anybody ever comment on that thirty day, during that thirty day period? Just after you were doing the scoping? Um, there was a thirty day when we were doing the scoping, right?
Yeah, um, I don't think so, we have it in the file, if somebody did, but if, uh, I can't recall anybody submitting anything within that thirty day window, on, on the scoping, you know.
Oh, the scoping, yeah.
We've had so many meetings, but relative to what's included in the scope, no. However, the DEC did, uh, send me an email several weeks ago, uh, asking to add something to the scope, which was consideration of, uh, diesel emissions from the truck truck. Uh, had been subsequent to the substantial preparation of this draft. However, they agreed that the, the, the developer, JFP, of the draft, agreed that they would, in a revised version of this, include the diesel emissions as, uh, something they were doing. So we did receive that comment outside of that thirty day window, but it's still going to be incorporated.
Yeah. So you'll have some of, copies of the seven million page draft for us to.
Yes, and we, we can provide it to you, there's a, a, a link, we can send you the massive PDF, if you wanna download it at home. Uh, you know, you can come in and visit it, if we need to get more copies, there should be no reason you can't, hard copy as well, it's your.
For the public to come in and review those copies.
I requested a copy for public, that would be either kept at the clerk's office or in our suite.
And how long will we have to review this, when is the next?
The, the, the statute says that we have forty-five days to determine whether this draft EIS is complete. In forty-five days, we could determine that we need X number of additional items. So, now Jess and I get the job of sifting through this and comparing it to the scope. So what we'll do is, we had a very clear scope at the beginning, that was adopted, so procedurally, I'm gonna sit with the scope and then go to the document and see if the things that were identified in the scope are answered in the document. If something's missing, or if we need a additional component, like the diesel emissions from trucks, that'll be a supplement. Um, and hopefully, we'll prepare a recommendation for you to either consider it complete, incomplete, needing something else. Um, you know, so that's what our task is.
After which point?
Uh, then, once the draft EIS is considered complete, then there's a public comment period, which I think, uh, is another minimum thirty day, but I have to, you know, review the whole statute again. But we have a public comment period, and I think there's another public, uh, meeting required on the, on the environmental impact statement, so. Uh, and then we move on to final stage, and there's more public input and review.
So theoretically, they, they could start this project sometime in the summer or the end of the summer, early fall?
Because what's your, you have several months to public, so it's, so you have forty-five days.
Yeah, exactly.
Then you have thirty days for public comment, then you have a public meeting.
July.
Then, after that, I think the following meeting, you then have a, you actually vote on it, so you're talking.
So we're already in the fall.
Four months from now before you vote.
And that's just seeker, not detailed site plan.
That's only the seeker, then we get to go to zoning board to get the variance for the height. And then only upon then do we actually come back to you, so at the earliest, it would be next year?
Next year.
Or the very end of this year.
Yeah.
It'll be November, it's true.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're far out, the, the, and the, and the script is just very specific and, and, and limiting, and, and both limiting on us and the applicant, we have to meet deadlines, they have to meet deadlines. We have to have minimum windows, like I mentioned, thirty days for comment, so.
Thirty days, forty-five days.
Yeah, this is, think fall, before we even get to the stage where you can review that detailed plan for approval. We're still in environmental review.
We're still waiting for air permits, we owe them.
So we're looking at here.
New York State's open.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion, close meeting?
I'll move. Hey, we didn't have a public meeting, but do you guys have questions?